Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting here today, and thank you for your attendance. As we start today, we'd like to have an invocation given by Gary Webster. After our invocation, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Larry Harris Jr. from the American Legion, Post 100 Sons of the American Legion. Amen. Thank you, Gary.
I think Gary just comes in his meeting, so he'll be our full-time fill-in.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Larry, for being here and being willing to lead us in the pledge and everything you do. Thank you, Gary, as well. As we start today's meeting, we start with our consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a means of expediting. The consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chair, I propose the following items in the consent agenda be considered for approval. Consideration of order to approve claims for payment for February 5, 2025 through February 18, 2025. Item B, consideration of commission meeting minutes of February 4, 2025. Item C, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property. Item D, consideration of administrative adjustments for personal property. And item E, consideration of approval of partial amendment of the Gardener Lakeview Heights flat providing three lots into one and big building of utility easement.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is our emergency services report, Washington County Sheriff's Office, and we have our newly promoted Sergeant Jake Paul here to give our report. I'd like to congratulate you and also just thank Darrell Cashin for all of his years of service to the county. He did a great job, and you're going to do a great job filling in for him or taking his position, so thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Sure. Darrell's sad when he dawns, but he's happy. So, we're going to do the report a little bit this time. Just do a couple of highlights versus the entirety of the entire thing, go through some of the different parts and stuff. So, the period for this instance, this is January 21st, February 18, 2025. During that time, we had eight calls. Total on-throw height hours were 487 and a half, so all involved here. Certified net hours for this quarter, that's 54 and a half hours.
You know, as I was looking over that, it seemed like a lot of hours, really.
We had a couple of pretty extensive searches. One in particular, we will go there in the highlights here. So, yeah, total search instances here so far, we're at 12. So, the first highlight there was on February 16, just a couple days ago, 19:30, was when it started. We had a lot of rescuers on that hill at 9:00 all day. So, that was Lost Hikers on Red Mountain Trail, right beside the herd. It was a 33-year-old father and his 12-year-old son. We responded on a report of those two being overdue from the hike. So, they had planned a hike called Red Mountain. They were planning on starting on the S R A inside and then hiking to the Santa Clara Basin trail. They were overdue for the purchase returns, so the flight called in and was concerned, and we have no one in the area to search for them. So, we had teams dispatched from both ends of the trail. We didn't know which site they would be on. We also requested Lifeflight respond and fly over and see if they possibly located them. Lifeflight responded, but unfortunately, they were only given as hikers. And shortly after that, our search rescue personnel, we were able to get the naked model of who was at the hub and who were at the white. We were able to locate his prints, where his tracks were, and so our team followed that set of tracks for essentially about three hours or so, a little bit longer, continued following it. He was going toward the edge of Red Mountain, trying to find a way down, and it looked like he was looking back around and he realized there was no way out there. Just continued to do that, and basically for the side of Red Mountain. So, yeah, they were yelling out, they were doing that search for them and following the tracks, and after about three hours, they started hearing them coming back from the bulk of the party that followed us. They got fairly close to them, but it was a bit dark, and they ran a cannon, so it was pretty echoey. They couldn't get their exact location up, so we requested the star nine come out and see if they could get them to the trail. Unfortunately, they were down in maintenance, so we ended up having the Star Eight helicopter and something, and they responded back. So, they came and were able to locate them on a ledge just below where our rescuers were, and then landed and figured the helicopter would put us them out, and then they were able to put us them back. And Star Eight also, it was a lot long, so we have them transport several of our search rescue personnel back to the trail that they were on, because they were just all about them, all about them, and they were able to help out with that. The cool part of that story was January 4, this year, we had another rescue in the same back area that was a 54-year-old male who had gotten stranded in that same location. And as part of that, his brother had hiked up from the bottom and was trying to get down the hill, so he was packed, hoping to get on the ledge, was planning on jumping over that to try to find the backup. Pack didn't make it and ended up falling down to the land on the lagoon. And it was dark at that time, they didn't know where it was, so they ended up just leaving. And this, the father and son, they were lost on this call, ended up on the same ledge that that pack had fallen on. Didn't have the supplies that they needed, but that pack had emergency weapons, rations, food and water, everything in a tent, basically everything they needed to be able to get through the night, and we were able to get them. So, pretty cool story.
That's very cool.
What are the chances of us to split our hours on part of the pack down that?
It's very pleasant.
That was the main one from this report. During that call, we also had a group of stranded hikers on island, the Sky and Skull Canyon. And that one was fairly simple, but we had to split our teams. We did just a call, so they ended up getting up to them on the public, on the top of the sky, where the guys went back down, and then all of them were packed or packed or anything, all of them. And then we also had a man up St. Louis Trail, right at the end of the year, so that one began to break down. And that one was unresponsive male on St. Louis Trail, and he was riding on a bike on the trail. It's like a natural issue, but it's still on this page. So, search rescue and Lifeflight responded. He was located twice, like, my sitting at the court number, unfortunately. And Star Nine also responded on that. This is because he had a pretty bad, big rough year, and he went down that hill, and it was pretty bad, I guess. And then, yeah, that's the highlights of the story.
Thank you. Well, thank you for everything. How old was the gentleman, perhaps? Thank you for everything. Appreciate you. Our next item is consideration of purchase request. Ray Boyer. Good to see you, Ray.
The first requisition we have here is for equipment for the World Department. This is for a total of $29,47.99. Next couple are for the Western Department. This first one is for equipment to replace our Asian ballot. This is for $22,200,000. The next one is for four PS3 covered dollars. Another thing that was kind of a bit of a loss. And we also get a trading against our bottom line is $29,600. The next one is for the Mason Center. This is for asphalt repair, cost of things, crack repair, concrete work repair, the H B five height into the metal of bond, and three hundred gallons for a total of $24,000,926. The next one is for bear advert cooking. This is for red block and black casting, the cost of these display ads, streaming assets, video ads, video production. This is for $20,200,000. Next one is also for the pair. This is for 217, 10 by 10 volt video, mobile video walls, under the pair, that's what they're having now. And also at a previous point for purchase, we've had the last few years, this is for $25,000,930. Oh, and the cost also includes setup and installation. Next one from the Sheriff's Office. This first one was for Jim Gitz, the people that are here. This is for $40,000, $40. The next one.
Is that commissary food, or is that just part of the?
It's part of meals.
I noticed that there's a lot of fruit punches on there. I look forward to all these dyes being taken out. Sorry.
The next one is for a smart speaker. This is for $13,000, $20. And that's those trail, they are, they don't come back to them. This next one is, this one's a little different. It's ammunition purchase, and I got some new information. This is actually a program to where the school is now requiring the Sheriff's Office to train the school guardians. And looking into it and getting all the information, we will be buying the ammo and the supplies, but they will, the Sheriff's Office will build the enemies for that. So, school with each other, school with each other, we will let them use, and the only cost to us is paying instructors. So, with this first ammunition purchase, it's $17,264,99. The next one is for replacement vehicles for the council. I mean, those who are in the center. This is for, we bought, we're able to buy a new one, a 12 frame controller that got pulled out, or had that for $30,000.
I think this replaces an O3?
Yes, it's a, it replaces a Chevy Malibu that doesn't shift much.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what they're complaining about, but after a little bit of arm twisting, we approved a new used car.
And with their senior center being spread out, it's handy to have that and to be able to do it all. The next one, this is another vehicle from Public Works Department. This is replacing an old 2014 Camisserie. This is a 2025, so a cover for $37,000 by $121. And until we actually get a vehicle in and trade in the old, we can go around on our trip, show that we're placing value, but right now it's estimated at $9,000. So, our cost would be approximately $20,524. And then the final one is for the shooting sports car. This is for 40 by safety cover on, this is the shape cover, so they can probably shoot, and it is up to their, their keeping.
I have a question about this. I understand that the club was supposed to come up with some money. Is that reflected in this price, or is that?
That's the first I'm hearing of it. So, I was in.
All right, I'll find out. Okay. Ray, do you?
I need to know to.
Ray, do we know how many? Was this put out for competitive duty?
As far as I know, I haven't gotten a response on that.
Well, with those two very good questions, Mr. Chairman, we approve the purchase request as presented by Ray, with the exception of the final one. I think we'd like to have those questions answered.
Now, there might be a problem like that. Ryan's in the audience. I know that this is, this was put out for bid by the club. And so, I don't know where they are. Like, it's kind of a reimbursement situation. Ryan, do you remember the call that we were having with Susie on this? Like, maybe we can give back the information, but tentatively approve it without, without having to wait till next meeting? We're talking about the patio cover for Barry's, Alphabite, Barry Pavilion. This is about the world championship, the national championship that's coming in. We approved it in our budget. Susie had called last week and talked to you about it, and we've spoken.
Yeah, I just said we need to go through the process. So, they did go through the process?
Okay.
I understood that it wasn't, so I will amend my motion now.
Okay.
That we approved the purchase request as, as in.
And then, at the same time, we still expect clarification on a couple of these questions coming up. But then that way, we won't have to put it on next meeting agenda and go forward. Much.
I just wanted to make sure that we had gone through the normal process. That was my main concern.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
I seconded it. I'd still like to know what it's made of, permanent it is, and all of that.
Yeah, I did fix that part. It's a, it's a permanent. There are, it's anchored, so it's close to it, there's some concrete things, and it's then had, and the cost includes labor for the same cover and labor for the trees. And this is for a couple of 77.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll follow up on these questions. Thank you very much. Our next item is item three, which is consideration of ordinance number 2025-1282-0, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code various Title X zoning regulations, including provisions of the New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone, Affordable Housing Mining and Gravel Zone, M G, and Title IV Health and Safety Regulations. Victoria, good to see you here today.
Well, you know, I love talking about changes to Title X.
Yes.
A lot of these changes are somewhat minor. When we identify something that is like an error or glaring mistake, and we need to fix it quickly, and we have to move forward quickly to get things patched in, we noticed some definition deficits, particularly as it related to the open space definition for the recently passed New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone. So, we've created a more clean definition of open space. We've also added definitions for tiny homes on foundations and tiny homes on wheels. That will help with our affordable housing goals. We also realized that we needed to fix a deficit. We did not have a street frontage requirement for many of our zones, which I guess is just a holdover from olden days where we didn't really have a lot of requirements. And we just needed to patch that in now. We will fix that for all zones and put it in the zone for, for, to replace all the title here, but for now.
What does that mean, the street frontage requirement?
That means that if you want to have an industrial business, you have to have a street. You can't just work off a Sunday's night or. I did patch in also what we put in mining gravel, that if we wanted to consider a special area, but had a street frontage, we could do that. So, if we had this, where we have a separate one, we got the zone, we could raid the street frontage requirement, but we had a lot of zones where we had no street frontage requirement, which is just a code deficit, I would call it. And that got patched in to lines 43 through 72, we were attached in two different places. So, we also have what we call the two-house rule. If you have a V L M easement for access for your home, it's been customary that we give credence to that V L M easement for your home if there's, and you can get up to two houses and two eight-homes under that easement, even though there's no street frontage. So, we're just modifying current practice, I would call it. Do you have other questions about that, or should I keep going? Our next fix is the temporary housing accommodation provisions, which are about to sunset. We wanted to allow those to continue for three more years under the pilot program with a sunset date of nay to 2028. And you might remember that that was something that we did also to help people who were allowing family members to stay in trailers on their family property. And we've added in some provisions about the tiny home on wheels being allowed for that temporary housing accommodation, as well as an R B. So, it's just beefing up the current regulations and adding more options. It's not really taking away anything. It's adding things to that pilot program.
You know, I'm glad we have a sunset on it. I mean, it's, it's important. I mean, we need these options. Hopefully, we won't need them forever. And we also, this is something that couldn't get out of hand, could left unchecked, and kind of evaluating.
Yes, and we did add one line or two, line 161 or 163, related to if it got out of hand. We did have a situation where utilities weren't hooked up as they'd been promised, and they were using a honey pot, which I won't even describe at a public meeting, but they weren't hooked up to Septic. So, we added that as a specific violation, we would terminate the temporary housing accommodation if you have it hooked up to the appropriate utilities. The next small changes are plugging in our open space definition into the New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone, and you can find those throughout the next pages in the code, in the New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone, but particularly lines 430 through 499. So, we fixed the definitions in the New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone, and then we've also plugged in the live-work unit and work-live unit definitions at lines 741 and 761.
Just so you, just so you know, we don't have those numbers.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
So, what page?
So, let's see. I only have line numbers and not page numbers, so that's going to be a problem.
They have commercial zoning on our page three for the New Harmony Valley Zone.
Let me see.
Maybe that's a header.
I'm sorry about that. If I'd known that, I would have been referring to page numbers.
Also, airports involve closure on page seven. Sometimes it gives you some reference of where we are relative to your number.
The problem is, we're going to go to a bunch more pages, and I want to give us all these things. Okay, so, those line numbers for the New Harmony Valley Overlay Zone. Now, are those page numbers in the packet?
Yes.
Yeah, my page is from our first part.
We have both. We have page numbers on the document, and we have page numbers to the packet.
Oh, on the document. So, the page numbers would be page 16, 17, and 17 for fixing the definitions about open space. And then, the page numbers for adding, adding definitions, live-work unit and work-live unit would be page 23 and 24. Then, we're going to go to the mining and gravel zone on page 27. And Public Works requested a minor change to the mining and gravel zone regarding blasting permits. We already require blasting permits. They just wanted some clarity in there about their particular criteria. And then, on page 29, we have our last change. So, Title IV is not in Title X, obviously, but, but Title IV relates to land use in this respect, that we have defined nuisances that again relate to the use of property in Title X. So, we're requesting a change to Title IV Health and Safety relating to land use but found in Title IV. For this particular change, we need specific findings on this that are required in state law. So, my request, if you adopt the changes, that you also adopt the findings that are included in the staff report and also included in the draft ordinance for this particular item. And this relates to, on page 29, noise deterrence, audio deterrence for particularly agriculture. And the findings that are supported in the staff report and based on research, I might say, including research from Oregon State University Expansion Service on non-lethal noise deterrent strategies for agriculture, particularly food crop losses. And the findings, what the findings in those reports indicate that audio deterrents don't work. And the findings, what the findings in those reports indicate that audio deterrents don't work. They're only a temporary deterrent. And birds particularly get used to the noise cannons and other audio deterrents and they just return to ender crop. So the findings would be that there's a fire hazard risk for propane cannons that is an unacceptably high risk in our drought prone area. Audio deterrents do not work based on staff research and scholarly articles on the topic. Reasonable alternatives to audio deterrents exist and are cost effective. It's an unreasonable burden on adjacent property owners to hear noise cannons day and night past the property line of the farm or agriculture area that the deterrent is supposed to affect. Hearing loss is possible, psychological distress and pain. Restrictions on audio deterrents don't unreasonably restrict agriculture or bar practices and it's necessary and proper to enact these regulations for the safety and peace of the deliverer of county land. So that would be our specific request, that the county commission adopt the proposed miscellaneous changes to Title X that we've outlined and to Title Four Health and Safety Regulations.
Any discussions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I need to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five twelve eighty two dash O amending the Washington County Code.
My attorney. And you need to put in the findings or?
The findings are in the proposed ordinance, so if you find those, then adopt the ordinance.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Victoria. Appreciate you. Item four is consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twelve eighty three dash zero, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located approximately five thirty one north Cedar Slope Road in Enterprise, Utah from zone A twenty, a zone agricultural twenty acre minimum lot size to A ten, zone agricultural ten acre minimum lot size. Hereafter fully described in this ordinance. Scott?
Commissioners. So the two parcels that are highlighted in red are located kind of northeast of Enterprise. They are existing parcels. One of them is seventeen acres in size. The other one is thirteen point six acres in size. They are currently zoned A twenty and are, do not meet the minimum lot size requirement for that zone. One of the property owners is wanting to construct a home. And so we, when we found out about this oversight, it's been this way for years, but we wanted to help bring it into compliance. And so we did a staff initiated zone change. And it was properly noticed and it went to the planning commission. And this, the findings and conditions are listed in the staff report. The planning commission, after holding a public hearing, there were no, no one spoke against the zone change. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. And so it is for you today.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I think it should be noted that the required size for septic in this area is met by both sides.
Yes, thank you for putting that up.
It's not like you covered one hurdle as far as the acre size and then not covered another one. You're not misleading the applicant that they can build when they couldn't by other purposes.
Yeah, and just for the record and for any attendance, we don't, the government doesn't go around, we don't go around rezoning property without the property owners being aware of it. And so we communicated with the property owners and told them what we were trying to do and why we were trying to do it. So they are, and thankful for it.
Mr. Chair, on item four, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty five twelve eighty three dash O, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located approximately five thirty five thirty one north Cedar Slope Road by Enterprise and Utah, out of the red into the.
Tell us, I get the motion. We have a motion and a second on item four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Item five is consideration of resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty four fifty five, a resolution approving an agreement with Liberty Village, Utah to facilitate the America's Two Fifty Founder's Festival Pageant. I'll speak to this. So as we approach the year twenty twenty six and celebrating America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday, we have a lot of celebrations coming up. And actually, at the county fair, we're going to be celebrating the shot heard around the world, which will actually coincide with the dates of the fair, the Battle of Lexington and Concord. And so in agreement with Liberty Village, there's going to be a colonial festival on Village that will be at the fair, I believe, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. The last part of the fair. It's going to be amazing. It's going to be great, incredible. And it's going to be the best ever and we'd encourage everybody to be there. And this is an agreement where we're allowing, we're contracting with Liberty Village to kind of work out some of the logistical details for some of the folks that are coming and going to participate. It's going to be a part of our county fair.
That'll be great. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R twenty twenty five thirty four fifty five, approving an agreement with Liberty Village to facilitate the America's Two Fifty Founder's Festival and Pageant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, if anyone missed it, yesterday was a first time showing of a two-part series on Jefferson. And I would recommend anyone to view that highly. Put together by the History Channel, but it's an amazing history of the leading up to the writing of the Declaration of Independence, what was going through Jefferson's mind as he write. And it's quite an amazing thing. I'd encourage anyone to see it.
Yeah. Well, he's quite the guy and it's amazing to think of the young age of most of the founders being in their twenties and young at any rate. Yeah, check that out. Item six is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty five dash thirty four fifty six, a resolution approving American Battlefield Trust and Color Country Daughters of the American Revolution Chapter to utilize county library for historical display. And I have Alan Anderson to speak to this.
Up to you, Alan. I'm happy to speak to it. I've reviewed the document and I'm familiar with it as well. But Alan is our library director.
I'm probably here to support Devon.
That sounds good. I'm happy to speak to this item, Commissioner. So our local chapter of the American, the Daughters of the American Revolution, they've worked really hard to secure. There's a traveling exhibit about the American Revolution. As I understand, it's quite difficult to get. Not many chapters have been able to secure this exhibit from this national organization, but they've done it. And this just requires that there's a host site. And so Alan has been gracious in being willing to help with library space for this exhibit. So it should be amazing. They've got a, you know, hios, digital hios and these panels that kind of tell the story of the American Revolution. It should be a great exhibit. So this agreement would basically commit county space for the exhibit in Lexington.
And I believe this is the contract you're talking about, which the commission signs, if I'm correct.
Correct.
This will be mid-May to mid-June is the timeframe for this. I believe it has thirteen or so panels that go up. We're going to put that in the St. George Library on the main floor. In part because if we put it in the basement, the community room, it'll be a little hidden there. And we have summer reading starting in June. And so a little bit of a time conflict with the last couple of weeks or the first part of our summer reading. So we'll be putting that on the main floor over kind of more in like a horseshoe shape around the periodical area, reading area. We'll probably do a little readjustment on the furniture there and put it there.
Excellent.
Logical.
Excellent.
Yeah, Valerie King, who's with the Daughters Local Chapter, just fantastic human being, has been working on this. And she did send, I think all of us, sent us some kind of slides on this. It looks very impressive. I think it'll be a great display. And it's actually in high demand. We're actually very fortunate to be able to have an opportunity to have it on display. It's a national traveling display.
Yes, especially for this year and leading up to twenty twenty six to have it. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution number R twenty twenty five thirty four fifty six, a resolution including the American Battlefield Trust and contemporary brothers and American Revolution Chapter to utilize the county library and center for historical display.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it. Our next item is consideration of resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty four fifty seven, a resolution approving the Washington County Council on Aging Food Preparation Agreement with Allen's Culinary LLC.
Yes, we've had a longstanding relationship with Trio Foods to provide the Council on Aging Food for our programs, some of which are funded by Vic and Rance. We have put out a request for proposals and Trio Foods bid on it, but Allen's Culinary was an equivalent lower bidder. And so we're going to enter into an agreement with the cheaper option. The cost of each meal is similar, a bit more, but very similar to what we have under the Trio Foods contracts. Allen Culinary is local and Trio Foods is based in Mississippi. So we would request that you consider the resolution approving that agreement with the, for Council on Aging Food Preparation.
I think it's kind of funny the way it's written, the Washington County Council on Aging Food.
Food Services Agreement.
Yep, yep. Well, I do remember when we entered into an agreement with what was then ballet food. There were ballets, I think. And they sold and changed and corporate America has gobbled up different companies. And so I think change is always good, especially when it comes to food. Nobody wants to eat the same stuff. So anyway, I know that this went through a very competitive process and valuation and looking at what's best for the county as well as making sure we comply with the nutrition.
I like it being a local company too.
And they're untested, but sometimes we try new things. Hopefully, it'll work out right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R twenty twenty five thirty four fifty seven, approving the Washington County Council on Aging Food Preparation Agreement with Allen's Culinary LLC.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the motion. I'd just point out that if they fail, Commissioner Snow is a great cook and I'm sure he could go over there and very quickly look at it.
I could.
For the thousand two meals per day.
I don't know that I'm asking for that role, but.
It's in your job description.
Jacob, I would step in and help you.
Yes. Other duties are.
Yeah. Well, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now at item eight, which is consideration of resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty four fifty eight, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Jason Lindsay, L L, or Inc., DBA Big West Cleaning regarding floor cleaning at the Administration Building. Nicole Fosser.
Yeah, so every so many years, the county looks at current contracts and we go back out for requests for proposals just to ensure that we are getting the lowest cost and to utilize taxpayer dollars appropriately. So we did put an RFP out for this and that is basically cleaning and maintaining the tarazza flooring within the Administration Building. And DBA Big West Cleaning came back as the lowest bid, most responsible bid. And they are the ones that have been doing it in the past couple, for the past couple of years. So the resolution before you and the contract is for consideration of renewing their contract.
Very good.
I think it's a great price.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to renew the professional service agreement with Jason Lindsay Inc., DBA Big West Cleaning, and that's the floor in the Administration Building.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item nine is consideration of resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty four fifty nine, a resolution appointing a member to the Habitat Conservation Advisory Committee. Cameron.
Yes, good afternoon. It's more of a reappointment. Chris Blake has been with us for many, many years. And so his term expired and we are just reappointing him to that same position on the U C S.
I wonder how many years Chris, because it used to be Mayor Chris Blake back in items.
Yeah, he was on the H C S mayor.
It started, it has to be like twenty five plus years ago, right?
About, yeah. He's the longest.
Is he like the oldest, longest serving?
Yes, he is, we've heard.
Not even close, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not even a close second.
Yeah.
Twenty five years, that's almost since inception. Yeah, like I.
He was on the steering committee as well. Like he knows this from the very beginning.
Well, thank you very much, former mayor and good man, Chris Blake.
You had some Blake cousins.
We do. But.
That's not germane to the issue at hand.
But I do think we should approve and move and approve Resolution R twenty twenty five thirty four fifty nine, appointing a member to the Habitat Conservation Advisory Committee named Chris Blake with a term expiring in February twenty eighth, twenty twenty eight.
I'll second it as long as we have a full family tree.
Yeah, I'd like that family tree posted so I could track down all of Commissioner Snow's cousins. Anyway, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
First is my cooking, now is my family. What do I do when you guys are there?
We're on to item ten, which is consideration of resolution R twenty twenty five dash thirty four sixty, a resolution approving two agreements for concert performance by Lee Greenwood and Lone Star to be held at the twenty twenty five Washington County Fair. And I feel like, I'll speak to this, Suzie Latteoli is not able to be here. I feel like this entire agenda has been an agenda of good news. And this is just one more good news. We're going to have two great bands. Lee Greenwood and Lone Star, and I'm looking forward to them. And so I'm glad that Lee Greenwood is still healthy enough to come perform.
Greenwood, not bloodwood.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I mean Lone Star's got a lot of good songs.
Oh, they do.
They have a tie. He's one of the singers from, I think they have a tie to somebody in Utah. But they've got a lot of great songs and so I'm excited for them. But to have the Lee Greenwood, I've heard once before, but really, I don't know all of his songs, but we all know the one song.
Yeah.
And for the patriotic county fair that we're going to have, it is very fitting that we're going to have Lee Greenwood come give us a concert. I'm a lot of songs.
I don't know when that song came out, but I'm pretty sure I was in eighth grade because I was one of those kids that listened to country music on the slide.
That's cool.
And you can't sing it.
Of course.
I could, but I was.
A lot.
Exactly.
I heard Lee Greenwood as a young thirteen-year-old at the National Scout Jamboree in Virginia. And he came and sang this song, "The Fireworks Over," hey, it was one of the most moving moments of my teenage years. So I'm looking forward to a repeat.
Yeah, I'm kind of worried because I'm never starstruck, but I'm worried that, you know, I might just be like a little teenage boy and Lee Greenwood.
That is going to stick. That's a new thing.
I remember when I was writing that faithful night to warn the citizens of lectures in a conference.
Yes, Lee Greenwood.
Don't you mind that singing right there.
Okay. We're getting distracted, gentlemen.
I move that we approve consideration of resolution number R twenty thirty five three four six O, a resolution approving two agreements for concert performances by Lee Greenwood and Lone Star to be held at the twenty twenty five Washington County Fair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 11 is Consideration of Resolution R-2025-3461, a resolution approving the renewal of an agreement between Washington County and Granicus for short-term rental address identification and compliance monitoring.
Matt? Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, essentially, this resolution would just be renewing our contract with Granicus, who is a group that we've worked with the past few years, this would be for a period of another year. Essentially, this service allows various entities in the county to monitor and bring in the various short-term rentals in the county into compliance.
Very good. Wouldn't you agree, Matthew, that in light of some of the bills that look like they may be passed, at least one that would make their job much easier, I would hope that we would, because if that tool is available to them, at least let's say, rest of their blocks, that they would double their output, because we are obviously having a favorable legislative action that will enable them to do that, so. Can do that.
Yes, we're paying attention to the Walter bill, and we'll see what that means going forward with this.
Thanks. Thank you, Matthew.
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3461, presented by Matthew.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Item 12 is Consideration of Resolution R-2025-3462, a resolution approving a subscription service agreement for event management software that does the same. Janet?
It's good to have you. It's good to see you. Thank you. We know that the county is moving to NetSuite by Oracle for government, and the software is called Convention Suite, and it sits on top of mostly the financial side, so it would allow us to take the two or three different programs we're using now and combine them and have it integrate into what the county does. So, from the booking, to the contracting, to the event, to the invoicing, it would all just be seamlessly integrated. So, we would be very, I would be very happy not to write three invoices for one event.
Yeah, that would be great. So, it actually is a part of the Oracle product?
It's called a suite app, and it is a suite app.
Yeah, because even, some of your software is pretty big, right?
Yes.
Right after the internet was invented.
Pretty, pretty close.
Very good.
Commissioners, can I, an apology to Janet, can I add one thing in any motion? There is a provision that I would like to add to this agreement, so if you could just make it subject to attorney review and approval. I'll work with Janet to get that done.
Oh, with Jared, actually.
Okay.
I'm just his proxy.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't see a dollar amount, maybe I haven't read it.
I don't, I don't know if it's in there. I know that...
It's on page two. It's $15,000 a year.
There it is.
With the broke we're seeing, we...
How many years is it?
It's indefinite. So, just like NetSuite is indefinite with the county.
Will the amount remain the same indefinitely?
This contract would allow them to increase, because, you know, when we renew next year, I'm guessing they would have an increase.
But it's not a document where we're agreeing that we will use that indefinitely.
Correct, correct.
We use their software, we have to do it.
As we use it, we're going to pay for it.
Correct.
And then I'll work with them, we'll have a termination for convenience provision that basically says that if Jared and others decided they want to go a different way, then they can try and do it. Correct.
Okay. With that in mind, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number R-2025-3462, approving a subscription service agreement for event management software at the Beach Center, subject to legal review.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. 13 is Consideration of Resolution R-2025-3463, a resolution appointing a board member to the Administrative Control Board of Angel Springs Special Service District. Devin?
Yes, Commissioners, there is a vacancy on this Special Service District Board, and Attorney Commissioner is the appointing authority for the board. Kenton Harbin resigned, and so it's been recommended that Diane Hundle be appointed to fill that vacancy.
There you go. You have to be a member of the Angel Springs Service District.
You have to be a resident within the boundaries of the...
Correct.
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3463, presented by...
Very good. Second. We have a motion and a second on the resolution appointing Diane Hundle with expiration on her term of December 31st, 2027. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 14 is Consideration Resolution R-2025-3464, a resolution appointing a hearing officer for an employment matter. Devin?
Commissioners, under state law, the county is required to have a career service council that hears employee appeals of disciplinary actions. So, let's say an employee is disciplined, they want to appeal that disciplinary action, they can go and tell the story and appeal to that career service council. The law also allows the career service council to refer an appeal to an administrative law judge. This resolution would appoint an attorney who would serve in that capacity, so in the event that our career service council refers a matter to an administrative law judge, this would be our judge. The judge is Mr. Catton. His name is Richard Catton. He's been serving as an administrative law judge for over 30 years. He's qualified to do this work, and he's called upon, so that's what this resolution would do.
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3464, appointing a hearing officer for an employment matter, namely Richard Catton.
Second. We have a motion in a second on the item. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 15 is Consideration Resolution R-2025-3465, a resolution approving an agreement to the lease agreement for space in the Boulevard Building. Devin?
Yes, this is an amendment on a lease agreement. You've seen this item a few times, Commissioners, this is on the Boulevard Building lease that we have with the federal government for court space. This would make some small adjustments to that lease. Essentially, this would deal with some of the timelines that we've modified, so some of the design timelines that we've agreed to, that's taken a little bit longer than we expected, working with our federal partners, and so this would also modify some of our timelines on delivering cost estimates, on the interior finishes of the space and so forth.
Very good. You know, I'm kind of disappointed that this is not 500 pages. Anyway.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number R-2025-3465, approving an amendment to the lease agreement for space in the Boulevard Building.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Item 16 is Consideration of Resolution R-2025-3466, a resolution appointing a member to the Washington County Career, members, I guess, to the Washington County Career Service Council. Devin, I have you down to speak to this as well.
Yes, as you know, the term of Michelle Mitchell has expired on her career service council, and so this resolution would appoint Brock Belmapp to serve on the career service council, would also appoint Danny Drake as an alternate, so let's say one of our regular members is absent or unable to serve for whatever reason, Danny Drake could step in.
Those are two really good people.
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R-2025-3466, appointing Brock Belmapp as a member of the career service council and Danny Drake as an alternate on the career service council, with terms expired in December 31st, 2027.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. Item 17 is Consideration of Resolution R-2025-3467, a resolution pledging matching grant funds for a complete feasibility study and concept development of three regional significant bike and pedestrian trails. Devin, I have you down to speak to this as well.
Yes, our staff is working on some grant applications for the development of several trails, so these three, so it's Snow Canyon to Bayou, Virgin River, Washington City, Big Grandpa's Pond, and Hurricane, and then Sheep Ridge Road. So, these would be bike and pedestrian trails along those routes, and so the grant application would be for kind of a feasibility study and a concept design or concept development for those projects. As part of that grant application, there's a requirement that the county commit matching funds of at least 6.77% to get that grant, so in the event that the grant is awarded to the county, it would be expected to put up that by now.
So, it's not a dollar for dollar, it's a portion of the proposed amount, 6.77%?
Correct. And at this point, this is very, these are concept designs, we're not looking at fully engineered drawings, it's just a concept and feasibility study at this point.
No, it's needed, it's good, good news. So, I move that we approve Resolution Number R-2025-3467, a resolution pledging matching grant funds for complete feasibility study and concept development of three regional significant bike and pedestrian trails.
Second. We have a motion in a second, and just comment that this is a part of Washington County's goal to have a very robust trail system that adds to our quality of life. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Motion passes. That is the end of our regular agenda, and I'd just like to remind anybody that might be watching online that if you want to go back and re-watch, this meeting is rebroadcast on TBS Cable, Channel 22 and 108, High Definition, at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m., and 5:30 p.m. And it's also on the YouTube Community Education Channel, On Demand. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.